Going to go online for chance at this point, not that.
Yes, the zoom's on and we'll stream it basically as well.
Okay, okay, so they can see us, but we can't see ourselves.
Correct.
Okay, um, so this is a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. This is March fourth, twenty twenty four at six o'clock. We are at the Central Office Community Use Room at the Cohasset Middle High School. I'll do a roll to call a roll call real quick right now. L M R present. Jeanne Haley Dipple, president. Uh, we have a forum and we believe our other board members will be joining us soon. Um, all are invited to join the board and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, so we are at the public comments part of our meeting. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment?
That's.
Okay. Is there anyone online who would wish to make a public comment?
Not as of now.
Okay. Um. Well, wait a minute. Mister Plex is on his way. He's leaving Will Cup comment. I don't know which I was. All right. Um. At this point, we're going to move into executive session under exemption three. This is to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of the public body in the chair. So declares. The board will discuss legal options relating to Cohasset Harbor disputes and a copyright claim. So the chair so declares. Um, I entertain a motion to go into the public, I've seen an executive session under exemption three right now. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do roll call vote. Mister Brady. Miss Mar.
L M R I.
Jeanne Haley Dipple. All right, we will go into executive session at this point and plan to uh exit. Around seven thirty. Hey, okay. Okay. So we are back seven forty-four, a little bit later. Sorry about that. Waity things we're doing. Um, so we do have a brief update on the moist uh moisture mooring slash oyster litigation. Um, so the update is as follows. We continue to negotiate with Tituitt and are hopeful to reach a decision over the next few weeks. Uh, we realized though that our residents um are trying to figure out what to do in light of the information they've received in the bills they've been sent. And so as to Cohasset. Um, in our town, Cohasset mooring holders, we know have been sent the bill. And we are going to extend the payment for the moorings until June first, but we do ask for people to reaffirm their desire to keep their mooring by send, refund, excuse me, returning the form as you would normally do anyway. Um, with or without the payment. If you have concerns about your payment or your mooring status um as to what Cohasset is doing, please contact our town manager, uh, Mister Senior, and he will be able to reiterate what you need to do. So again, please confirm that you wish to remain uh with your mooring by returning the form or sending in a letter. But you have until June first to pay the bill. And like I said, we are hopeful to reach a decision over the next few weeks, but are extending the deadline in an abundance of caution. Okay, so now we are moving to the next um item, which is the F Y twenty-five uh presentation for the budget.
Exactly. Um. He's just gonna share uh the zoom so I can put it up in there. Cool, all right. Um. So where we stand, um. So we start, uh, we start the whole process every year with the select board budget message and um three key elements of that message are to maintain our triple A credit rating, to maintain our O P E B contributions and to support level services. And and those are all foundational aspects uh as to what we're working on the town side. Sorry, sorry. Uh, and also there's a whole, uh, the select board also said we need to support the special time any twenty-three projects. Uh, and I I won't go all over here, but there's, there's, there's quite a lot of them and they're all active. Um, so which uh as we roll to the next slide, um, there's also the ongoing sporting zoning bylaw, working group, uh, the committee, uh, the sidewalks and roads paving plan, the communications planning that we're doing and. So what does that mean? So uh, the communication specialist, which was originally partially funded by uh, our place now baked into the budget. It's now a permanent position. So I know we haven't formally introduced him, but I guess we will, but you've all met Kevin Perry. So he's uh, our continuation of this position. So we're very excited about that. Uh, we've also uh been working on uh creating another, what am I say, project manager, field engineer position. Um, because there's going to be a lot of capital projects and and we need to have additional oversight and additional ability to be in rooms with project managers and in rooms with the public and and to to be in the field. Uh, so we're going to be working on that. We don't think that's a long-term position. That's not necessarily a permanent headcount. Uh, and after our conversation, Sean, I's conversation earlier today, we're, we're going through individual budget meetings and all of the departments. I think Brian Joyce would like to us to consider that being a contract position, at least for the first year, if it would work. Maybe to hire someone through a firm. So we're going to see like a project manager firm. So we're going to see if that might work. There won't be any healthcare lab or anything like that. So um, that's what we're kind of be looking towards. But the goal is to have somebody onboard for this summer because the projects are going to start or maybe even earlier if we can make it work, definitely for the summer. Uh, go back on some slide. Um, and also we want to try to dedicate some of this part-time, you know, the one-time funds we have, a little bit of free cash left over. For ongoing zoning project support as needed, um, potentially a portion of the project manager costs, uh, and also any special events. I know we talked about that in this last year. We did. We did support um very in part two, but very completely. We had fireworks, kind of all came together. We did a whole lot of support for that. Uh, and I think this year, and we also tried to do a big trunk or treat. I think the library was doing this big event. Unfortunately, the weather kind of wiped us out. I think we'd like to try that again. We'd like to do something. Well, actually, the weather kind of, I think, you planned it, didn't it? Just like, of course, the weather would just straighten up, right? So we're, we're hoping to do something in the fall, maybe a truck or treating. And I think that's going to be very popular, something bigger like that. Well, select book can be a customer, most popular will be even the doom this year. He's not often comes a sand line. Uh, no, maybe not too. So uh, but no barter this year, so. Uh, or again, some, one of the things we've long talked about is doing some kind of celebration of the past. I know there's a ongoing conversation about having a passive day or something like that. I think we're going to continue to work with the community, see what's there, uh, see what might be exciting. So as we start, just to take a look at where we are, um, one of the nice things that that's foundation for F Y twenty-five is F Y twenty-four. So we budgeted about five hundred thousand dollars. F Y twenty-three came in a little low, but F Y twenty-four is coming really nicely. It's Mary Quill's parting gift to us. Eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars. That's three hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred nineteen dollars over the budget, which flows into F Y twenty-five. So I'm using any of that. Uh, and we also have expectation that several major projects continue. Uh, the grass of our project, project being the biggest, but not the only one. We're going to see uh another, we should see another good year this year, which will help F Y twenty-six. That's the best. There are state aid increases proposed, um, in chapter seven, restricting the local aid. I'm not very big, but they're there. Um, what's undetermined, this is two things. Uh, one is the, you know, the budget change. Right now, the governor proposes and then the House looks at it, Senate looks at it, conference committee. Uh, so we don't know what's going to happen. This is an election year. It's, it's, it's rare for the Senator House to back away. At the same time, everyone has seen that revenue was behind, uh, the revenue, state revenue figures are trailing their expectations. I don't think the first thing they'll, I think the last thing they'll cut is local aid, is the last thing that kind of comes chapter seventy. The other piece for us is that we went to full day giving this year, which put a hundred and twenty more kids on the rolls. Those should all have count for chapter seventy and and as of now, that it's not showing. So the schools are reaching out. I'm working with our legislative uh legislators as well to say, hey, what's going on? And that sometimes happens that this, this sometimes a lag with the government budget proposals, maybe a little bit of it. Some of the you're, some of the numbers in the bureaucracy hasn't, haven't always caught up. So I'm hoping that's what that is. And if we see, you know, a several hundred thousand dollar growth in chapter seventy, it'll go right through because the schools um ha- ha- you know, were expected. We were too. So that said, the budget is balanced without that. You don't have it. So we're going to go with what we have, which is not bad. So on the expense side, there's also some couple of really good numbers. The offer county pension is only up three percent and it been running at ten percent. And that, that's a couple of hundred thousand dollar savings. So when you add that to, so it's a two hundred thousand dollar swing in lower expense with three hundred thousand dollars swing in revenue. That's, that's a, that's a percent. That's a whole percent. In fact, it isn't varying. Um, health insurance costs are only up about five and a half percent. I have a projection of the nine. We're actually in the lower half of Maya's uh average and also below general market books. I heard from uh uh, someone on the committee that her private insurance went fourteen percent this year. So I don't know what anyone else's experience and uh, five and a half is good. We also have a little cushion in the budget. Uh, we had our um, I had Dan Mulligan as our assistant, uh, treasure collector, did a great job of doing a bottom-up look at our health costs. And I even found a little more savings we squeezed out. So we increase, if you actually did the math, it's not even a five and a half percent increase from year to year, because you have some savings and we're comfortable bringing that increase down a little bit. The thing we're still waiting, that numbers are, that was our work is commodity casualty. We've been projected at ten, that's what we're told to project. And that's not so much us. That's the world, you know, it's hurricanes, it's floods, it's droughts, it's, it's, it's war, it's shipping costs. Um. So because the, the um, while Maya does do excellent job of maintaining our rates, there's still pressures from the world at large, particularly on the property casualties side. Uh, we actually do an excellent job of working with them, our workers' comp, and and I think we've done a really nice job of holding our premiums down and getting discounts. We, 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 we work for every discount. If they say this is the year we're really looking to cut it out on water pipe damage. Our, our, our facilities guys double down on checking the pipes, checking all of that. In fact, in the buildings, like we're, we're right in the high school tonight. Uh, there's been water, there's water warning alarms that are now going up. We were installing through mine in all of our buildings in key locations. So that if there's a moisture change, sudden moisture change, we're notified so that if a pipe works or something's leaking, people know. And and these are key places that they can cause a lot of damage. Uh, back where we are right now was what it damage, seven years ago, maybe eight years ago.
Oh, more than that. It was um, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen?
Uh, because it was a water leak and it poured. The only good news is that it poured down into the offices instead of writing classrooms. But it was a frozen water pipe in the ceiling. Uh, and now since then, we've all worked to keep those things. Um, where we also are, we're the third year of labor contracts. Now, the base cost of living increases three percent in all of our new they should have been at two, two and a half, three. Um, and the plus any merit increases or step raises in all of the contracts. Uh, we're not projecting any staff increases on our side. That was the uh, level services is just that field engineer, project manager, and yet which might even be a headcount, that just be, that it'll just be a position. Uh, and inflation has eased. I think we've all seen that. That said, prices are higher, particularly on the public works. Because the, you know, the price well did spike and that's asphalt and that's all kinds of stuff. It's moderated a bit, um, but you know, shipping costs are still in there and steel and all kinds of stuff. And that affects a lot of what we, we, we uh, we do for upkeep and maintenance. Um, and if we can switch now to the I think I'll look at this, if you have copies of this, but I, you can go to the PDF. It's awesome. There's somebody who loves, so can I, did you blow this up? Keep going, there we go. So you see, this is the, this is our, our revenue side up here. Yearly two and a half increase, that new growth number. What you'll see here for the first time on the special stabilization fund. So those are in here. I'll show you in a minute when they come back out. Two point three, here, I'm expecting two point three, but you could increase that. The board chooses to um, to go five, two and a half percent. And if it keeps going down, that the number in the green on the highlight, that is what the governor's numbers are. That's like total aid. That's chapter seventy. That's our restricted aid. It's veterans aid. Um, it's um it's a couple of other small things. Local receipts, um, uh, we've been able to bring that up a little bit. I remember this one actually was um, several hundred thousand dollars even beyond that. I actually have cushion. Uh, because we had a big spike in building fees. And that's not going to stay there because the grass of our partners project only happens once. That said, there's still a significant amount of work going. Uh, and the league party fees are still high and Inspector Halls done an excellent job of really capturing the actual costs. And he makes them file a, a uh, an affidavit at the end, a final cost affidavit to pick up any cost. Like the fifty thousand dollar kit, their ten thousand dollar kitchen becomes a hundred fifty thousand dollar kitchen. Or the smaller pair, so they become a whole half, a whole house renovation and the, the fees are being captured in a way they weren't. Um, and if you can see here, let's just go back up to a little bit. We're not using any free cash in the budget this year uh, for operating. I mean, last year we did that just to pay the old debt expense. We're not even planning to do that in the operating budget. We're looking to pay that at the operating budget, of course. Um, if we can keep scrolling down. So and and again, I, the, the six sixty-five as well, the state, the state pulls right out. That's, that's our M B T A expenses, that's our county tax, uh, that's our um contribution to Plymouth County Skidoo Control Project. We also put in a decent chunk to charter schools. Uh, there's actually apparently multiple kids that are going to charter schools. I, I, I know I have the same look, look from our school folks. I went in, I'm like, I don't put the state's ass. And there's one person on a school choice. We don't participate in school choice. So yeah, why we have a tuition for school choice, I don't know, but it's there. And the schools are following them. It's about twenty thousand bucks. And I don't. Um, I don't know why that's.
I think you can go to a, a district that has
Oh.
school, school choice, even if yours does not. I don't think it has to be.
Well, that's what that depends. That seems to be what's happening. It's one student that's on that, which is, they're right. Um, but we don't let people come in.
Correct.
The um and I, again, the custodian staff and fellow staff are noted up here, but they're actually, because we had talked, but right in front of pandemic about getting merged. But we stopped. But they're still sitting there because we haven't breathed on this pitch. So those get folded back into the actual school budget, town budget. Um, so but they're, they're up there.
Is that, is that payroll cost?
Yes, those are just payroll.
So they're just payroll.
Yeah, and schools that expand, they're, they're, they added into the janitors.
Yeah, last, yeah.
Yeah, that's why the reason their expenses are run higher than ours, even though they're paid less, there's more of them.
Yeah.
Um, and also in our side, uh, we ended up it was a contract and we ended up hiring that person instead as a part-time person when that, when the company left the business. So we still have that person on a part-time basis. Again, so these, these are the, 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 the things that are in our shared budgets. Human resources, we, school support is um this, the um
S R.
The S R plus, uh, we put crossing grids in there too, because it makes sense. Um, it's not much, but it's in there. More contribution reserve fund, that doesn't get us all the way to the ball, but we just recash and fall to get all the way up to where we want to be. Um, if you see the search or vote check, we actually have less kids going there this next year. Um, so that's the reason that tuition request is dropped. Um, and if you go down, you can see that the pension, I mean, that pension cost is all I got. It said three hundred thousand dollars is going up a hundred thousand dollars, which is great. And the healthcare, again, that's, that's one of the lowest increases we've been able to do in the last four years, which is great. Um, so at the end of the day, our, our net increase of, of net new revenue is a little bit higher than last year's, but again, because of um, the, the new revenue we've had through the, the growth uh and primarily from that, I mean, decreased expenses. That said, we're going to a year which more expense, uh, maybe up to three percent. And the schools, it's been a little bit even more accelerated. Younger staff tend to be lower on the payroll, but they wrench it up the trucks. They get their masters to this, but you move up the, is it lanes? I think called that one.
Definitely, yeah.
Uh, we don't have lanes on the town side, but it, it's the same cost. So um, so that's where we are. So uh, the, the, the net increase uh, one point three five million dollars. Uh, so the schools, again, this doesn't count the uh, stones up top. They have paid twenty thousand in schools and funded the twenty-six thousand on the town side. Um, they'll quickly would take all of that if you, if I let them. Or and and John Doc Ray, which we can obviously. So um, so I think we'll be fine. Uh, and and the schools, we had, we've had a lot of conversations with schools. They pretty much cut out every request. They had, what a whole lit, you know, lies, they're all gone. And the number we're at now should meet them. Okay, there, there, we seem to be in an okay place. The one piece of, if I could, if you can flip, Kevin's back to the panel. Yep. No, wait, I'm sorry. Does anyone make questions about any of that?
Um, I do.
You want to go back to that?
No, no, you don't have to.
Okay.
Um, so do we have any sense from Sasha Vote Tech? Um, because they've been accepted into M S C A.
Yes.
Do we have any sense of what our contribution is going to be?
So that's an excellent question. So um if anyone saw what happened on the North Shore with the Whittier School District where their contributions were based on potential attendance, not actual attendance. And it, it, it meant some districts, some towns are going to get wiped out. They said twenty kids are going to get like a million dollar bill per kid. Our shares is, would be vastly smaller because we only contribute a small number of kids even. And so it's only based on the actual. As I said, that, I'm not sure if they're going to do a repair or a full replacement. We have not decided that yet. At a number of communities, Rockland being the premier one is, 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 is opposed to any real spending because they're going to get hit hardest because they have the most number of kids and have smaller families. The goodness for us is March feels now in the district. So that's actually the moving our costs further. But we were looking at the, at the first predict, the last set of projections. I, I think, I think I've shared.
I mean, we're there. It's just, it's, it's too high to be reasonable, I think, in terms of all the tech, like they're at a three hundred million dollar school renovation. There's no way Rockland is going to go for that bigger town. So they're going to have to dramatically scale that. Our contribution were very small comparatively. I want to say it was like one point two five percent of
Yes, kind of.
whatever they get at the end of the day. And so right now, the big question is like, what are they actually realistically going to do that they think will obtain support? Um. You know, they started uh projecting out one twenty-five million and then went up to three hundred. And I think they're going to be zooming back down. Um, and I think they anticipate forty percent from the M S P A.
They were going to get a much, they, they, both textbooks typically get much higher because it's regional.
At least, sorry, at least, yeah, at least forty. So you know, where it lands, it, it will definitely be a, I think, a substantial amount for Cohasset, no question. Um. But it's just so inked away right now, I think, in terms of pricing.
Right, but we're going to have to think about it.
I, I think it would be good to have someone in later this spring, maybe our representative to put in uh, the town has already designed one of the plans, or or maybe have Tom make either certain time you can do a presentation. Because I think they're having some public conversations. Um, so. Can we switch back to the red line slide?
Sorry about that, the screen.
That's okay. So, okay, just, that's okay. Um, so as, as, so again, the, the, the last bit of uh, so as, as has been publicly talked about in this very building, about the school committee, um, schools have been hit by some very significant unexpected special education costs this year. Had a very good meeting with them last week and they're working very hard to bring that number down this year by figuring out how it's going to fly. They asked, the state has a fund for unanticipated major expenses. They applied for that. And now we're trying to figure out exactly what the number will be this year and what will impact this next year. And that shouldn't be in the budget because it's not a set. It goes up and down. So we want a big, a large number of, which we don't have to. Um, they're, 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 they're going to come, I, I think that a future meeting, we're going to have to get their requests officially. Or tapping more money out of special education savings, what's left. Um, that's how I, I, we agreed that before they come forward, the select board for that, they need to just really hone in on where they are. Um, and I, we might, you know, we might be asking for money i- if it's available in the spring for the fall, we may just wait till the fall because I think there's still a degree of uncertainty is that what the hold is. And we have time in the fall and there'll be new free cash and we may be able to solve their problem, the twenty-five problems such as it exists in the fall, but um, we're, that has to be done. So it's, it's in a special case, it has to be, you know, choice. Um, but I, I do, I think it's enough. There's our work still to be done on there that, that, and I'm confident we'll get there. So wow.
Well, and I don't know if our free cash policy would allow for that, particularly for waiting until the fall based on how it's currently drafted. Do you think that if this is a recurring expense going forward based on this placement, we'd have to work with the schools to figure out kind of address it as a recurring incident, including in the budget or through the use of the special and stabilization fund, which may be effectively using free cash in many ways, but um I think the most important for us is if they want to do something, just go around, time's getting tight, or you want to article. So they really get a land left lane.
It would end up doing it. No, they, they, they want to go, it would just run to the one-time cost or something like that, or we just put in the measure.
I, I'd have spent, out of this special.
Oh, no, 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 that, that's, this comes to the sport. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes me.
No, no, no. So for, for, no, to solve this year, it does not.
Yeah, I just don't want to.
So it's, it's really to fix next year. And again, the reason that we, we don't know what the hit, the, the full expenses. So, so that's
Okay, okay, okay.
We, we want to get it as most possible. We want to get them half a million dollars in time. It's like three hundred thousand. We, we want to get our
You want it actually.
And we're, and they've committed to that and I've committed to it ultimately in any way we can. The other is that, you know, we have to keep watching state revenues. They're still, they've declined. And while the state is unlikely to affect localities in an election year, um we saw the watch, um, you know, it may have, you know, something on the perfect, and then maybe other special funds that's getting squeezed. That'll hit the schools first because a lot of extra money that flows in schools, including circuit breaker, I mean, and things like that. Um, the state has been fully funding the circuit breaker up to seventy or seventy-five percent for the first time in the last few years. But that's like, if there's if they're reimbursed on a special education, that's a slip, so it's going to affect them. Um. By the way, another piece to that, our expenses is that apparently specialty schools has affected everybody in the region. Uh, the whole east of Massachusetts, sometimes the tuition are up something like fourteen percent, which is just and there's a number. And again, it's something we have to do. Um, but it's not just us. So the state is taking a hard look at the same. We, we have to fix. Uh, and the other is, is just, you know, difficulty of hiring across specialty divisions, I note too, in particular, C D L drivers and paramedics. There's, you know, we're all scrambling for a small. We've actually added into our contract that will pay for someone to get their C D L. As long as I stay, it was for three years. We have, they have signed a contract. If they leave, they have to pay us. So we actually, we, it's a union contract. We're actually doing what the first, first one, first one is in the, in the class now. We expect at least two or three more to add because we can't get people to the L's. They're not coming to work for any municipality, such as us. And the same thing with paramedics. Uh, we have a the town very wisely, much of a firefighter, paramedic, hybrid in many years. The challenge we have now is that there are paramedics that just don't want to be hired. And they're, they're working in the paramedic. And it's not against it. It's us. Every community that in the, in the region is, is having that problem. Boston is even trying to, they've never had. Um, so a world cam, the police, that's, you know, we've actually been able to prove pretty strong. Anything out of civil service has been helpful. Um, but it's not even just the civil service. It's really that there's some specialty areas that are just very hard. So, uh, but again, it's something we work on. We're going to be jumping in the line item soon. You'll be getting a big giant chunk of stuff the way through. We'll be going through the advisory committee, um, and then it will sort of. The select board's priorities are in there, making sure that we're funding the support that's needed. Uh, and again, particularly is that project management piece and communications. You had a good question.
Yeah, I have, I have too. So one, I just want to circle back to the special education stabilization fund and that, I want to say this publicly. That fund is for unanticipated and unexpected expenses. So it can't be used as a budget filler for next year.
Right, it's for issue.
It, it could be, right, it could be for, for this year. So I just want to make sure everyone understands it. I, I think it's been used in the past um, somewhat. So that's one. And, and the second is when we get the next round of the budget, can you have F Y twenty-three in, included? So we have some benchmarks against F Y twenty-four and twenty-five.
Are you definitely for actually
Actuals, yeah.
The actuals and the mid-year expenses.
Okay, yeah.
Which are always year to year. I mean, it's not always a fifty percent. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but hopefully we can have uh software runs or run those episodes.
Yeah, I've seen previous budgets and it's always been F Y twenty-two budget, F Y twenty-three budget. Rather see the actuals. Yes, thank you.
And what is, what is the amount? Would you want to ask why?
Right.
I had you too. So that's uh, that's, that's that. Uh, so um.
Chris, if I could ask one?
Yeah, sure.
Um, the one thing that we talked about doing at the end of last year, but we didn't do it, and I would take this in support. They want to consider, if you want to move on this as a goal, but baking in money for a historic study for a historic district. Um, we will still need to get that airlifted. Um, it's not on the agenda, but it, it is a budget item that To get that airlifted, um, it's not on the agenda, but it it is a budget item that if you want to work on it in this upcoming year. We've had trouble recruiting people, you know, indirect advertising right now, but um, we have had trouble recruiting people for it, so. I think that um, that is something that we'll need to put a modest amount towards, um, so. People aren't inclined, if we want to, if we want to actually do that, then.
Actually had that in earlier version, when I, when this this didn't respond, I think it would come up. Absolutely, this is plenty of any, like twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, and I think it would be a small amount. It depends on how big the district is, I suppose, but.
This is based off Mrs. Storm, it's her presentation, right?
Yeah.
Anybody else, anybody questions this one?
No.
Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the select board goals, town hall relocation, updating cost. Ms. Leary, you have some information for us?
So, um, following last week's meeting, we heard from the owner of One Pleasant Street. Um, he indicated that we would need to pay additional fees for the upfitting of the town offices. Um, those additional fees he initially um told us was about two hundred thousand dollars. As of this afternoon, we got a document back from his attorney indicating they went three hundred thousand dollars, and provided backup as to why. Um. He does indicate that we can pay for it all at once, or we could amortize it over the week, the five-year lease term at a seven percent interest rate. Adding an additional seventy-one thousand dollars to the annual lease payment. Um, on the table is still your options to purchase at the entire building at nine point one million. The second option would be to purchase the first floor, if in fact these Juve condo at three point two million dollars. But in lieu of the credit of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was initially um. Awarded, he is now saying he would give us a credit of two hundred thousand dollars off the upfitting cost. So, no more lease. Um, credit, it's only a credit of two hundred thousand dollars for the upfitting cost, which we would pay three hundred thousand dollars for. Um, as far as an option to move in early, um, there's no option to move in early unless we pay. Entire upfitting cost without him giving us the allocation, which is five hundred thousand dollars. Um. So the terms of the deal have significantly changed, um, since the last time we spoke. We wanted to bring this to your attention to see if you have a desire to move forward, um, or if in fact. You want to look at a plan B option.
Um, so one question, um, these additional fees and costs of three hundred thousand. Is this work you would need to do regardless?
It isn't, so, um, there's some work here that we have circled and have gone back to. His counsel to say, these are opening costs that you would need to do regardless. Um, what they're telling us is that if they leased to somebody else, they would charge them back for the upfitting cost. Similar to what they do in many of the new builds around town.
Did you explain, you said something earlier, why? Big chance.
Um, he's saying it's just the cost is over and above the original allocation that he accounted for, for the the town.
And so the question is, uh, let's say we buy, if these were a condo, there's an option to from two million. Um, if we were to buy the first floor. We would have to pay an additional three hundred, right, for the upsetting? Uh, does anyone else on the board have questions? Um, well. But do you have any questions on One Pleasant Street? That's it.
That's good.
Okay, um. So. In light of this information, um. Are there other relocation options that we might want to consider as well?
So, so we have been working on, you know, A, B, C, several different options, um. And many of the options are dependent on what the board's desire is here, you know. If if we're gonna stay in town hall in phase a renovation, or if we're gonna stay in town hall in phase a repair. Um, or if the desire is to get everyone out of town hall and just find a new location. Um, that may be a little bit more challenging, and the workforce would be decentralized for sure. Because there's nowhere to place in town to really house all of these people, um. So, we have a plan B to keep um as many employees in the town hall annex. And then just move about five employees out of the town hall annex for the time being, um, to make sure that the historic town hall is vacant. So that's one of the plans we've worked on, we've talked about moving employees to the office spaces at one thirty-five King Street. Um, we've also spoken to owners of other properties that are willing to lease us space for additional offices.
And there's no other town building that has space.
So one thirty-five King Street is the only building at the present time that has additional space, um, nothing at the water department. So there would be maybe an officer or two at the water department. Um, but Brian Joyce is probably the only one that would kind of pop in and out of there, because that's his wheelhouse, um. As far as, I know people are talking about recreation in the library, the first and second floors. The challenge with that is that the programming has been programmed out through the summer, so we've been displacing additional programming in town. And I think that desire is probably not to impact any other services, if. If we can find a way around it.
I think there's, there's a midterm and a longer term option, so as Michelle was saying, I think. There's things we could do in the midterm where we maintain the annex option, because the the fire separation work has been completed, I think, it's been in there. Doors are in, it's all not, so that's thoughts, we can, we can access, we can maintain, at least on a for a period of time, the the annex. And we can then, um, again, as Michelle said, we have some location options for the period for short, you know, or at least for the summer. And then, if if we need to, we can then start doing a more radical relocation, maybe we can. We 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 take those bigger chunks of space and wreck in the library and wreck building for the longer term. Uh, then, if that, at least that'll be enough advanced time, so, you know, we don't want to like push kids, you know, the parents have already booked for the summer, right? So we want, we don't want to start disrupting that, if it's September, we could, we can make plans for that once those programs are over. If that's what we end up, if that's what we end up doing, it also gives more time. To consider what's available, whether it's a purchase of something or.
But we only need to, other than five people, okay, from the second story. We will only need to move out of the annex. Once we have a plan in place. Which takes time, and and bidding takes time and all of that, so. I I guess my question is, are we gonna have that plan in place and approved at that? At town meeting, so that we have to move in September?
I think September would still be aggressive, even if we did have a plan in place, approved at annual town meeting. Um, because of bidding.
Right.
In design, things of that nature, so I think that's still an aggressive timeframe, um. I think you're looking probably. Closer to the winter months or even that spring to actually start construction, um.
If if that's what we choose to do.
This is Pleasant Street.
No.
No, no, this is, this is if we choose to stay in the town hall annex. Right.
And move five employees out to temporary space elsewhere.
And then, okay, right.
And then, there's more of a, there's more repair plans that are developed, that we have to relocate, stand temporarily while that works.
So, we can deal with the five people that is, it's potentially possible that we can. Take the annex and basically slowly repair it.
So to slowly repair the annex, you would have to relocate the employees for a short period of time, so they're not working during the construction.
Yeah, yeah.
So we were talking about it, and I think you're talking anywhere, we we were estimating about a three-year timeframe. Is what it would take, um, unless you did a phased approach and started, started phase one. You did that in year one, and then phase two, phase three, but I think the appetite would be to kind of complete it all at once, get the employees back to the space and. You know, business as usual.
And in that period of time, how do we think that will affect town services?
There's a significant amount of in-person contact that happens, so we would have to restrict that. We're just moving, we already started, we've already started, like, sewer records have to be pretty arranged. We're gonna be doing more of that once we determine the next steps, I mean. And that projecting what the board's gonna do, and should be said, well, one plus is not really an option right now, then. We announced, we we're gonna, we've already talked to the the people with five employees, how we handle that. Um, and how we rearrange space and we add it to the maximum. Uh, and then I think it probably ended up happening to, we're talking about closing on Fridays, um, to the public, and maybe limiting. We'll we'll have to put it in more of a schedule, we've been, we've done some of that before, it's it's just phasing it in, so. Uh, we, uh, I'm at the baby times like June, you know, the quarterly tax collections, and there's things we can do more remotely, we can, you know. Maybe have some of the tax collection handled with the senior center for some periods of time, I think it's things we could do creatively. We we do a fairly, a fair amount of robust, we have a fairly robust uh online permitting system already. That said, people still have access records, and we don't have our golden files, that there's been, they're not digitized, so. Another element of this may be that we start setting aside money to start digitizing those files, so people don't access that in different ways. Um, but there have to be some restrictions, and I mean, you know, there there are, there are some staff, and you know, part of the challenge is that. Some staff, no one was hired the expectation, cannot hold office, I mean, some some jobs have that as a benefit, but we, some people don't want that. I mean, when they come to work for the government, I don't tend to think they're gonna have a office and all that, some people, it works really well. I think for some people, we have to make it to see how how accessible that. And then the other point is just, you know, also pushing phone calls, I mean, everyone doesn't have so. Our phone system is very good, we actually push calls all over the place, that said, um. But if you come in the building department, and someone's like, the John, or one of the assistants, oh, take a message, you'll get through it, but. It just, it just, that's another chain, how do I get to reach everyone gone? Um, I can, we figured that out, uh, and again, I think we'll have the time to do that, as if we cannot come to the fall, that's that likely to happen. So we have a little time now to keep, we have the treasury board in place, the building department in place, the clerk in place, those are the three places where people interact the most. Uh, and I think we have a little time to figure it out.
And if One Pleasant is still an option. You know, we'll be guessing how soon it will be up and running there, fully functional. Office.
So so I think that really depends on this, this new upfitting cost. We have to understand from him, is he gonna start this? Or is he not gonna wait until town meeting now to start up getting, until we give him the money? Um, we did ask him that question, I haven't heard back from him yet, uh, but, um, if he started it now with the. Guarantee that we would pay him, which we can't guarantee anything, because it has to go to town meeting, um. We could move in as soon as, you know, town meeting, voting, um, but if we have to wait until a town meeting vote. It's gonna take him two to three months to upfit the entire state's requirements.
So, okay, so we're looking at One Pleasant, and it looks like the real cost is eight point five. The exercise and option just to buy the first floor, which. Um, is still the cheapest, like, just so we're clear, in terms of like costs of a town hall. It's still the option in my mind that enables us to have a. Option without a tax increase, so if you care about paying more taxes, this is an option I still think we need to strongly consider, because. Putting aside aesthetics and dignity, this is still for people who. You know, are financially conscious, including about all the other recent tax increases we just passed, like. This is a real option for them, and I don't think we should take it off the table, I think we should continue to. Figure out more, um, I'm less jazzed about the lease, if we're just gonna do a lease, um, without a permanent move. Here, I do think that puts pressure on us to figure out what the permanent solution is. Um, if we're not gonna do the One Pleasant. Street option, then I think, you know, we're sort of in limbo for some time, trying to figure out, what are we doing, where are we going? Are we starting people out across town? Uh, they do not like the idea of a faith renovation, I think that's bad for our employees and bad. Will it cost more, we all know, once you drag out renovation, you're just increasing the cost, um, it's bad for the public. I I don't like the idea of people moving in and out of that building when it's in the midst of. Um, construction, it's just, I think we should be minimizing, um, risk and activity there. That's just my, my immediate gut reaction, I think. One thing that I would suggest our board could consider if we wanted. If we're not gonna move towards the One Pleasant Street option, um. Which I do think is an important option, even though I recognize there's potential for valid views about this. I think it may be worthwhile to have. And and I, I know, because people don't like to work consultant, but I'm just gonna say, you know, the Collins Center. Is a group that will can and will help with like a. A plan for what are your relocation options, and maybe even like, what are your realistic options with respect to a renovation of the town hall? And how do people actually feel about that, to try to like, help us put together and accumulate feedback on that, including representative feedback? Because we may have people who are like, yeah, let's do a five million dollar renovation. But then other people are like, yeah, but then are we just gonna be handed a fifteen million dollar bill five years later on, like, I want to know. I'm, and I'm gonna be one of those people, just to be perfectly transparent, like, I don't want to paint rotted wood, that's not my idea. A good, um, renovation, so I want to know what the real cost is, including over time. So I think that we still have a lot of like, a lot of balls in the air, and the one that's most. Um, that has a lot of time pressure on us is the One Pleasant Street option, but I do think to Ellen's earlier point last time. Well, what do we do with forty-one five, and then if we go to One Pleasant Street, like, what's the real plan there? So I get that brings me to Michelle, we talked last week about, if you, if you tear down the annex, instead of a freestanding building. That's like a performing center or some sort of community center, what what is that?
Okay, uh, so full disclosure about an estimator, I just took these estimates from the current bids that we had from the previous town hall. Um, so what we're looking at here is if we're looking at the historic town hall with no annex, tearing down the land, and it's moving the systems over. Adding the bathrooms, things that we spoke about, you're looking at a construction cost of seven point six million dollars. And then when you add in your contingency, your O P M, and your bid structure, looking at eight point six million dollars. And that's for freestanding renovated historic.
It's in the help page, and the window siding, and everything. When that's town side. And we had a cost, and I know you had it, so I just wanted to. Of. Quote-unquote. Twenty-five to fifty-year plan on the annex. They still up around.
So, as we spoke of last week, so there's a renovation cost, and then there's what we're, what we're calling a co-compliant. Repair cost with some cosmetic items, right? So that cost is coming in at six point two million construction, when you layer everything else, and it's eight point four million. And that is just code compliance with some cosmetic upgrades to the building.
That's the building as is?
Yes.
So for eight million dollars, we rebuild, we repair what we already have.
Yep.
So we can have all employees in there, you don't have to do. Um, one pleasant.
So.
And and how, how sure are we that that is a? Um, and I, and I know I'm unfairly asking.
No, that's okay, so, we're never sure until we go out to bid, right? Um, but what I just want to highlight between these two proposals. That this is not a renovation, the town hall annex and historic town hall will not be fully renovated. It will be brought up to co-compliance with some cosmetic work. The historical town hall with no annex, that is more of a renovation, so. Those are the two differences there.
Now, the other thing, it seems to me, we could. Just go to the. You know, I I believe, um. I'm not sure, but I believe. I'm not sure, but I believe that legally, because the town meeting. Authorize a purchase of one pleasant street. Though we might, and Jeanie might know better, we might have the authority within this board. To move forward, and especially, I think, if we move forward, could we move forward with a, um. Just the first floor of one pleasant street, using as a justification?
We need the money, so that would be, um, depending on the amount, if we needed to increase taxes, that would be a ballot vote. If we don't need to increase taxes.
That's what I'm imagining.
We still need to tell them to look for that, to that three point two.
Okay, so I, I think with the numbers that we got from Michelle, and I apologize for my voice, I'll try to be clear. Where we are is, if we're gonna support town functions. It's either one pleasant at three point five million, which includes the outfit. Or it's very basic renovations to the annex at eight point four million. And that doesn't touch historic town hall yet. Because I will argue that we will need to do work on historic town hall under either of those first two scenarios.
Can I just, like, a litmus test for me, is that eight point four million, does that include new bathrooms for town hall for the annex?
It doesn't include new bathrooms, it includes some cosmetic repairs to the existing bathrooms.
We're talking about the plan three, which is the the annex and just making, uh, the store functional.
So we're talking about like, I'm just, like, the bathrooms to me are gonna be sort of like the litmus test of. Are we just like tiling over the existing, like, still everything?
Everything's gonna stay, the footprint's gonna stay the same, we'll upgrade some tiles, some new fixtures. That's gonna be, that's gonna be returned, that's a code compliant item. Um, electricals code compliant, um, but the bathrooms come into that cosmetic, you know, they're functional, so.
So it's like new tiles and everything. So we're into, so I'm just on.
New toilets, sorry, you stepped on the bathroom. Well, but if, if we're not changing toilets that are sixty years old, this is telling me something about.
Because they're restoring, you're not gonna change those, they're restoring. They don't change those.
Changing, yelling.
We're trying to preserve here.
I'm just trying to get a sense of what this eight point four is rea- realistically getting.
Plus, like a nineteen sixty-two toilet. The, uh.
Sorry, I.
No, no, not at all, but anyway.
Actually nineteen eighty's toilet is developed.
No, I see that on the slower fix, they're trying to save one. Um, so if we were into, again, I forgive you, everyone, because. If we still have one pleasant option. And restoring, tearing down the annex. And making this town hall a beautiful place to go, adding two bathrooms in the lobby area, you know, front left, right, right and left, right? What we're kind of envisioning. Um. And getting all the town functions into one pleasant. So what's, what, what's our total L B, if, if everything worked out right?
Okay, so you're looking at the eight point six for the annex, for the, um, historic portion. Um, and also, I just wanna add that you're. Even though you're buying the building for now at three point four million dollar number, you still need to add in those one-time costs. Those don't go away anytime, our one-time, they don't go away. Yeah, so all that stuff doesn't go away, so now you're into that building four.
Trying to think, we're trying to.
Yeah, to get a whole, to get a whole number.
Still, or something that is relevant.
Well, do we not have one time for the repair of town hall, like, are we gonna? Want to move people out while we do a run out, and then move people back in?
So, yes. Okay.
So all those costs are still.
We still have. And let you do that phased approach, which it doesn't seem anyone really has an appetite to do, because if you move people out. Over a period of time, like five people, no, we're not gonna run five, or we're not gonna add a wall, we're not gonna do those things, we're just gonna be able. And essentially, they're working.
With what we have now, by way of safety features, the temporary safety features that, that you put in the annex. So we hammered down. Chris, are we okay in the annex until we came up with a move, a move? That, I'm just trying to think ways, because we're, we're talking about moving one, two, at least two times, if we go to temporary. And then bounce back, gather all the staff and bring it back, so they would say this would be the annex. So we're looking basically two moves back and forth.
So, in speaking with John Allen. What he indicated was, he can issue a temporary occupancy permit for a period of six months. Um, if in fact, we have a plan to move forward, he can issue an additional six months. He said, once construction starts in the building, we do have to do it.
And he needs to amend his letter of January twenty ninth, where he said, if all of the, um. Mitigation was done, he would issue a C certificate of occupancy, period, with no timeframe. That's, that's really not cool that it wasn't spelled out like that, and we're hearing it, no offense, verbally.
And he has yet to address the architect Longwood's. Things aside, and saying that Longwood doesn't know what he's talking about.
I think, I think we won't be in that one.
So, I'm gonna go back to my original question.
Well, he's an architect.
He's not in Massachusetts, he's not alike.
Doesn't make any difference, he's a registered architect. He's a registered architect in way, and he does not practice in Massachusetts, because his. Architectural firm does not have him do that kind of work. If he needed to, he could, so I don't think you need it.
If, if it's a question of whose side we're going to take, between the town building inspector and the fire chief, or an architect.
I'm aware of that.
We have to go with the building inspector and the fire chief.
I just was disappointed, as I said before. That we didn't get a. A complete answer to this points, which I thought. And I know a little bit how to read those, I thought they were well praised, and I'm not going to. Argue with that, but at, at this particular point. But I was disappointed, we didn't get the kind of answer that I would have, that I would have liked, and. But I don't think that the board is gonna do anything other than go with inspector, you know, Allen, that's fine. I'm just disappointed that somebody's, a citizen who did quite a bit of, of work, and has, has some validity in his work. That's neither here nor there, let's go back to what we're talking.
Well, let's, okay.
I have a question.
So what was the question, and?
So asking Michelle, I, we do, so we have an option, we can lay out to people who are, um. Maybe watching. Trying to, since we can circle around a whole bunch of things. Let's just say, all right, if we form say, one pleasant. Right, we want, and we do, the annex, down, restore town hall. Maybe starting there in town halls. Restore town hall, so what, civic center, whatever we just named, town, the town is a whole size. At the bathrooms, the windows, siding, you know. So what do we, and let's take the one side, add the one side one-time costing, what are we looking at?
It'll be almost thirteen million dollars.
All right, we're looking at thirteen, all right, that's what. So now I'm gonna ask another question, there in the annex. All right, not the bandaid, it's doing the annex, except we still have around eighteen, nineteen million?
For renovation?
Renovation, yes, the annex.
Yes.
And the store, so it'll be a nineteen million there. All right, so let's talk about.
And I'm sorry, Paul, and that thirteen million, did that account for the relocation and we cost and?
And let's go to option number three, we may have other options out there, I can focus television there. What we just discussed, all right? Fixing the annex, adding a plug here or there, um, waxing the bathroom floors. And doing that kind of, just doing the basic renovation, so, or the basic repair, or lack of that order.
Code compliance repairs, plus cosmetic.
And do we have an estimate, um, how long would that figuratively last?
So i- if we did do the, if we did do the cosmetic repairs, with the system upgrades, I mean, you're, you're talking. A substantial timeframe, twenty-five, thirty-five, forty-five years, I mean, it's, it's substantial.
For the repairs.
Because you're replacing systems.
Yeah, we put in brand-new age back. It's just.
But that's still vertical address, that's making the store town hall. It's just basically code compliant, so basically, looks pretty much like it does today.
Some paint.
And, and I'm, I'm just trying to look at the math, so last, last week when we were talking about capital budget. And the, uh, one-time cost for the lease. The lease for one pleasant street, and the one-time cost to move into one pleasant. It was two oh five and two fifty, so that's four hundred and fifty-five thousand. Funding source for some of that was going to be ARCA and reserve for a hundred ninety-six thousand, and capital budget for fifty-four thousand, for two hundred and fifty thousand. And then today, we have another three hundred thousand, so the cost. To go to one pleasant, our lease, is seven fifty-five. And if you take out the two fifty, from the funding sources we identified. From last week, we're looking at five hundred and five thousand dollars cash we have to come up with. That's for, for the lease. And, and, and we, we don't know if an option to buy is gonna happen, because we don't know what's gonna happen with. One pleasant in terms of, I, I mean. So, so, so there's half a million there, but to the earlier point. The math on the historic side, and assuming we have an option to buy one pleasant. Certainly makes much more sense than renovating both parts of forty-one Highland, based on the numbers that we've been given.
So you're saying if you add up one pleasant street, plus just the. Repair, or which, I'm sorry, which?
The historic part, the nineteen fifty.
The historic, so we just do the.
So, we just do the historic part, which I think is kind of where we were, we were getting to. Because that, that's.
That's the eight point six.
That's eight point six, the bare bones number on that, that was five point four, wasn't it? Just for the auditorium section.
But that didn't include roof siding.
Right, that included roof siding and windows.
Right, when we added that, it'd be seven point six construction cost.
Right, so even if it's seven point six and three point two, right? That's ten point eight, is still less than seventeen million.
Yeah.
Factory from one time to.
So, seventeen point five million, yeah.
So, Alan, I completely agree with everything you've said, that the math that's been laid out here makes it sound like one pleasant is the best. Cost-effective option for town hall functions. We know there's an interest in town, uh, I'd even say it's a mandate to make sure we do something responsible with Highland Act. But I wanna come back to a point that you made earlier about the cash issue, and whether or not this new upfit cost. Poses whether or not we can move from town hall to one pleasant street. On the timeline that we discussed last week.
No.
And, and that, that's what I wanna make sure we tease out of this.
I, I, I think. He's not gonna allow, I mean, we're not gonna move until after town meeting. And, and then he's probably not gonna do the work, as you said, Michelle, until everything gets approved, so we're looking at a fall move-in. September at the early.
Yeah, so I mean, he's continuing, it's just, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, yeah.
He's continuing to work on the building, right? So, he's got, obviously, he's got stuff he's gotta do. So anything that we want is gonna come basically later, so he's got fondness to build, I'm just saying.
So the residential units, um, from what I understand, are about ninety percent complete. He's waiting to find out if, in fact, he does get approved for the condos, because some of the units will have different finishes. If they were to be sold, then it would.
True.
So we're looking at, again, that's Alan's point, so probably. If, this is the way the town decided to go, to, um. Sometime around September, with August, you know, around that range, I mean.
September, I would say, I would.
So, where does the board wanna go from here, it looks like we do have some numbers on some options, including. We're sort of getting closer, so getting more confirmation on one pleasant, um. We're getting closer to seeing the various options with forty-one Highland. Um, we still have to figure out the condo, which is gonna happen on March sixth.
I'm sorry.
So. I think that, really, that's the missing piece, I wish they had done that last month, because then we can move much quickly, because we'd have more accurate pricing, but. We could, we start to anticipate, um, or put together a plan for outreach. In the public forum setting, to see, you know, what people are thinking and feeling, uh. About public coverage?
No, we'll be focused upon with the options that we just discussed.
Sure, I mean, how does the board feel about the option, but, you know, just to be honest with you.
Well, I, I gotta say, I'm a little annoyed that, um, at this point. The developers come back with three hundred thousand dollars in upfit cost, that didn't exist. Not even six months ago, when we were looking to purchase the whole building, and, um. That's concerning to me, because it's three hundred today, what is it gonna be? You know, what date is town meeting, June third? What is it gonna be on June fifth? Gonna say, oh, sorry, I was wrong, it's now this, it's now that, and then, and then we're locked in, so. So that, that's concerning to me, and, um. That doesn't include expanding the parking, does it? I think.
Yeah, there's no mention of that, very quick point.
Yeah, so, um. From a financial perspective. And it seems to be that, that's what citizens in this town, myself included, Jeanne said she is as well. We're concerned about the dollars being spent, and the, and the tax dollars. And for fear of repeating myself from last week, I don't think that citizens in Cohasset. Are as enthralled with the idea of a shiny new town hall as perhaps we are. And I think we have to listen to them. However, that being said, a shiny new town hall at one pleasant street is a lot less expensive. Than doing the, than redoing the annex. So when it comes down to dollars and cents, it's, to me, speaking for myself. If these numbers hold water, it's the only one that makes sense. What about you, Jeff?
Well, it's, the facts are the facts, the reality is, and it hasn't changed. Except they upped the price, I'm not sure if I, I, I don't think I'd meet them all the way, I might meet them halfway if they made it. If they were clear about thirty parking spaces, which they didn't see, they didn't mention that. But we are back to, the cheapest way to do it is one pleasant street. Um, the town has not proved able to make a decision for any other, for any. Real option so far, and I don't think it will, there's just too much entrenched opposition. And I don't think that we can believe, that we, we know what is likely to happen if we come up to it again. We're going to hear the same thing, there's something wrong with it, there's other options at the last minute, and we'll be again. You know, frozen in, in place, so I think we're kind of where we should be, I would like to find out whether. They responded, um, or will respond to, um, the thirty parking spaces. And I know they are gonna cost them more on so-called tenant improvements, tenant improvements, but nothing that we're doing. They don't have the ability to do much of anything between now and town meeting, realistically. If they started to sell it, they couldn't close, they couldn't get to end mortgage, if there's going condos. Um, if they were doing a regular dimensional purchase price, it'd be. Sixty to ninety days before they could close, so the story about they need to get more, blah, blah, blah. They're not gonna get the money anyway, and we're probably the best thing that they can, they can do, um. If they wanted a little, maybe a little bit, and we got the thirty parking spaces, I say we go forward with that. Um, it's not necessarily ideal, and I've been. Um it's not necessarily ideal, and I've been, I've had some doubts about various things, but there's a reality that we need to do and people would. Need to understand, and I think most of the people that I've talked to. Who are rational. And have really looked at this, they've heard what we have said, I've gotten a lot of um negatives, but I've gotten a lot of people who say, you know. This is the reality, let's not try to re-invent non-reality. So I think we. I maybe give them a little bit of extra, I make sure we get the parking space and say. The select board is behind you, if you want to keep doing this, you're gonna find the select board will not be behind, be behind you, and this is a really lousy market. To put condos in the market, or any in in Cohasset, this is a really lousy, lousy investment market. Or a tenant market. Or retail or anything. So if they wanna keep on going on forever. With an empty building with no revenue coming in and keep what they're doing. We're the, we're the best deal. There probably are our best. Generally speaking, in investments, but everybody. Is ends up, it's a best deal for both. I think it's the best deal for them, it's the best deal for us, and I think, you know, just.
Thank you.
And I'm tired of talking.
Chris?
Uh I agree with Jack on a couple of important points, but just to boil it down, uh I think we have a mandate from the town to make sure we're taking care of Highland Ave, but it does not necessarily mean putting town hall there. So I think eight point six million that Michelle discussed, caveat, we understand. We are not a professional estimator of construction costs, but I think it's a fair indication. It's something that we need to pursue at town meeting. Uh and then when we think about the functions of town hall, it really comes down to One Pleasant. Or redoing the annex. We know that the annex will be a disappointment and an expensive disappointment. So I think uh we presented to the town is if you'd like to save five million dollars. And preserve town functions, One Pleasant Street is the way you do that. I know there are concerns about making sure the price doesn't go up from where it is today. I think. We can get something in writing with the building owner that says this is the price contingent upon all the necessary steps that have to happen before we have the authorization to spend the money. I would suggest we pursue that to lock the price and provide some certainty. And then the last point I'll make, that is uh, the last point I'll make is that. For public outreach, we need to work on our communication game. We need pictures, we need floor plans, we need information that'll really help people understand what we have planned. Uh I love that Michelle put together the eight point six, but we need some pretty pictures to go with it.
I could I just add one thing. I do think that it is extraordinarily important that we ensure the town, this historic. Town hall. Is preserved in some manner or some, because it is town halls, but the historic.
Thank you, Jerry.
I agree with Jack, I agree with Chris, so before um. I would say, and then reiterate that we hammered down the final number for this fellow, so they can keep changing. Parking. Also, again, with forty-one, we talked about this earlier, getting some pictures, some things that start socializing people in some outreach. The people that have their own suggestions, we know that. And another thing I want to throw there that Jean brought up is that Collins Center. I mean, this is a hot topic, you know, and it's it's. You know, so to separate a lot of people from different things, people that. You know, all have different ideas, so it's, we're all frustrated. But maybe getting outside influences to come in and look at the options that they presented. Uh and saying, you know. Well, gee, from a cost point, that's your best, that's your best bet. From the static standpoint, that's your best bet. Where do we find the path forward that's? You know, kind of crossing the t's and d's on the i's, even if it's not what everybody wants, or. But it's kind of uh about the nation, but we all want, so, you know, so. So many people can live with and. That maybe checks a little bit of everybody's thoughts. So that Collins Center, I don't think so, Collins. Et cetera.
They're like a public policy institute out of the M.A.S. um. And I would suggest, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure we need them if the board is so unified in one direction, I think then it becomes more of a communications game more than anything. And so I think let's just spend the time and money on that. Um I agree with everyone, and I think everyone is actually agreeing right now, which is great. Um the only sort of wildcard I would put in there is. I think with respect to Highland Ave. If we do have community support for some, for, I'm like, I'm robust nonprofit proposal to take it over. And to do the eight million themselves, I think that's something that I would urge us to keep an open mind towards, because. I think that they could have potential to bring that price down a lot quicker than we could, um and. You know, they, there there just could be some opportunities there, but we don't know until we know. I do think that that group. You know, may- maybe that could be an option slash contingency that we pursue in parallel too, as we go through and we say, well, the town will do it, but if we get a better offer, then we can consider that as we're sort of. Heading along the way, and so then. It looks like, because if we're gonna do this, I would say just logistic wise. We're gonna put a debt exclusion on the ballot. For. Annual town meeting, it sounds like, if this is what, well, we have to wait and see first about the condo. And whether that's an option for the first floor. Uh but if it is, then it sounds like there's a desire to move forward and try to get. Just an all-in solution for. You know, the eleven or twelve million.
So you're talking about a debt solution for the ballot or just an issue at the town meeting with funding coming from the operator?
Well, how are we gonna fund? You're talking about funding the.
So the senior center, the senior center purchase falls off, I think, in two cycles, one to two cycles. Which will open up a couple hundred thousand dollars here.
You're saying fund out of capital? Is that a coming of the capital stabilization?
It is. Um I'm saying I can go back and take a look at that. Any, any months of it. I mean, I. I mean, again, it's not so what I don't have to see, but I can take a look at that. It's a my word.
Well, we could, I mean, one option is we could, we could get authorization up to ten million to bond it. But then we start the repairs on forty-one Highland, maybe at the end of fall to see if the nonprofit idea has any legs, so that way we don't spend until. We sort of give that idea time to marinate, and if it's not, if it's not there, the money sitting there are ready to be deployed, if that's the way we go.
Don't worry, what we did is stabilization. Free fund. And I think if we did that, then we would find what opposition to this particular favor talking about.
You're gonna have to look at the numbers on capital stabilization, that seems like a big chunk, um but it maybe isn't. I felt like you and you were gonna jump in. No, I'm I'm churning, churning, so um. Special town meeting in the capital stabilization fund, we allocated five hundred thousand dollars into the capital fund. For town hall. And. I don't, didn't see that. Other than what I articulated. Earlier. Which. Would have left. Two hundred thousand out of the five hundred thousand. To come out of that capital chunk of money. Which would have left the three hundred thousand that were now being assessed for. But it seems like all of the capital. Has been allocated, one point nine million has been allocated, right?
Yes, but the one point four million in the capital stabilization fund, that's not. So the one point nine million is money that goes into cash or is here, unless the debt service payment's about one four, if I remember. And we have about one four in the capital stabilization funds. So it's a whole other setup on option money. We also have five point two million in general stabilization. Um again, I wouldn't write with tapping that necessarily, but it's also there. And you can also replenish that with the free cash.
And theoretically, we could write a check for. Three point two.
Well, you have to fund it now, we don't, we don't have three point two million dollars sitting around. You you have to bond it, most likely, but you can also pay it down.
We can't use cash, we don't have that much. But you could. Could we pay the rent for ten years?
Well, listen, one option is, if people like this idea, but we're trying to figure out the financing, I guess we could um. To put this before the Cohasset financial planning working group and get recommendations, if you want some recommendations on the math.
That's another.
Because, you know, we we could look at free cash and chart it out and then take the. There there could be some ways out there, but I think we need to sit down and also get consensus, because I think that. Trying to fund a ten million dollar project out of our offer, existing tax revenues is gonna take some careful thought.
We could, we do, uh well, the question is whether we do have the authorization. To to. To pay the rent. From the town meeting vote we had before.
We didn't get the money, but the.
But I I I'm trying to figure out.
Because it failed at the ballot, and so the only way we could pay for it was through the tax revenue. That needed to be approved by the voters at the ballot, because that failed, it's like.
I know what you mean.
You know what I mean?
But, you know, I I I understand. There have been times in my life when challenges for funding projects has been more than a little interesting, so I can't help myself.
So let me just go to the the working group to come up with options.
If you're where you are, I I think if we jump ahead just a little tiny bit, by the scheduling. Um I yeah, I told you all my Kevin officially. Opposite date, and I don't remember, I got March twenty-seventh, we have a tentative date.
So so me and Chris have been discussing um. It's a loose date, we're trying to find somewhere to have it that's big enough to have people, but it would ultimately be having a discussion with the people. Kind of putting out all the options out there and. Kind of ultimately letting them kind of decide.
So you you'll be putting the money in my pocket?
Yeah, when I hit the lottery, yeah, I'll buy you a check.
Just wanna see how good you've worked.
But yeah, so March twenty-seventh, um depending on where the location will be. What we have right now, and then when we figure out a location, I'll throw together a communications plan, but the brass tacks of it would be really. Creating engaging information for people. Um I actually have. Over here, a couple of samples. So these are just.
Hold on one second.
So.
Yeah, I I think Michelle's point is, where does the board wanna go?
Yeah, 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 we were just, we were just, okay, I think we skipped to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but I think the next pivot after you decide that is. How do we wanna time this, because we got the.
So I think. The direction the board is, but someone disagree if you want, um that we wanna pursue the One Pleasant Street lease. We wanna try to lock down, I'm sorry, the buy, the buy. Subject to the planning boards. Which we'll know on March sixth. So again, we sort of have to learn a little bit of wait and see. We. Need to lock down the pricing as it relates to the purchase of the first floor. And I think to the extent we need to keep kicking the tires on that eight point six million, we're tearing down the annex. And just doing historic town hall. I think that these are the warrant article items that we are putting before, uh considering putting before capital and advisory, but I do think we may wanna wait to see if the condo thing goes through, because that would. Change things. It it would change things, and so I think that we wanna, maybe before we go to capital and advisory, you know, just take a beat on that to see where that goes. Um but assuming, let's assume that goes through, that I think. These are the thing, th- these are the projects that we want them to start considering and vetting, is that fair to say? Just to give them plenty of time on their end, because they're probably gonna wanna go through the line, I know, you know, have questions and set their up.
So I have another question. Yes, so we. Have a target date of March eighth, which is Friday, two of the five employees out. We were originally gonna move sometime on thirty-five King Street, and I don't know how the board feels about us using that building temporarily, which is now. Longer term temporary than what we originally thought, um which would have been four months now, it would be maybe till September. Um or do we want at least space downtown for the five members? I think those are the two options we have for us.
My feeling.
I have a question. How do the chiefs feel about it? That's most important.
I don't think they, if they mind, um it's empty office space, we can still do all the design work with 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 us there, um. We would just have some back offices further away from where we are now, but.
But it wouldn't affect any of that we're planning.
As long as, as long as it's. For term.
Within that, within that time range.
Yeah.
I was just going to see what the chief quickly and chief doctor.
Yeah, no, we, I honestly haven't talked to the chief doctor very long, because it's not occupying the space right now. I've spoken to chief doc, um chief quickly, as well as the, as well as the detectives that are occupying the space, and they find the buses. Utilize them.
We are very, very fortunate that both of our chiefs are truly dedicated to this town, and I'm quite confident that they'll do what's best for the town.
Chris, are you okay with the five to one thirty-five?
Yes, it sounds like there's no downside to it.
We're not paying anything since we already paid for it.
Okay. Move forward on one thirty-five King, the five employees until September.
And how tight are we on the uh the eight for forty-one? Pretty good. I mean, I know you have to go up for. Other stuff, before we're in that ballpark.
It's based on RFP response, that's right?
Yeah, we pulled, we pulled the uh line items right out.
Okay. So. Um again, I think we wanna see what happens on March sixth, but assuming that the first floor option is an option, then I think we start moving the information along to capital and advisory, although. With the note that the select board is gonna be doing the lease negotiations with One Pleasant Street. And so maybe we wanna hold a little bit before.
I think we wanna start the lease negotiations adding these terms now, so that prices don't keep escalating.
Not lease, you said lease.
Sorry, purchase law, sorry, I'm sorry, I was thinking. Sorry, um the purchase, and I think we also have to make sure there's also that term. That the owner has to get approval from his lender to allow us to assume or purchase or lease. Or anything, so we have to make sure that we have that.
Why don't we wait until March sixth and see what happens there before we begin spending money on our end on legal fees to propose PNS to that extent, because. I don't, I don't want to, um until now.
He committed to holding until town meeting anyway now, so.
The board okay with that?
Yes.
Not trying to get things up and running. Okay, and then um the Cohasset Financial Planning Working Group will try, will. Consider the. Financing. Um uh okay, anything else you need from us in terms of next steps as a reference? Okay, so we're moving back to, so we're gonna, everyone mark your calendars if you wanna come to the March twenty-seventh public forums. We can continue to discuss what we're gonna talk about at the forum. In terms of other communication plans. So I think that one of the things that we're mindful of is. As we. Are aware right now that it's hard for people sometimes to make meetings at night, is there, uh you know, a convenient or alternate way to get some representative feedback? From people on the various town hall options, we talked about a survey. Um we talked about maybe a virtual forum on Facebook or something like that. Um anyway, I'm just throwing it out there, because I do think that we wanna try to reach a broad base of people who are likely to be coming to in with something we can.
Um so. I'm doing my civic plus, kind of working through the website right now, but my goal is to create a landing page where um. Some of the things I have here. Some of the things I have here. Nope, that's my email. Right there, so just say, the town hall. This is just something I threw together, but in the bottom right, that current QR code. Has the landing page for the last year's special town meeting. Obviously, I would make an individual QR code that would be for a new page that would have more information on potential moves. So, yeah, so once I get that page done, that'll fill in here, obviously. It's a lot of hearsay that's up there, but this is just more for aesthetic view. Um, this would also be full of quick information, just kind of let people know they want more information.
We probably want to do videos, and I would suggest this time, depending on what we want to do actually with the remaining forty one Highland Ave. Part of maybe what we need to consider is programming in that building. So what are we actually doing? We want to pay eight million to renovate it. And I think this is actually the fun part, assuming that the town retains ownership. So we might want to get feedback to from a survey on that, because people, I'm sure will have a lot of.
What would you like to see? What would you like to see if?
If this happens.
Yeah, this happens.
Um, are there other ideas the board has or questions? All right, um. All right, so we're looking at creating a landing page. Looks like you're, Kevin, moving in the direction of the homepage, or that's great. We'll probably want to do maybe two videos again, and we can, you know, talk more about that once we actually land on an option. And then it sounds like we want to begin getting a survey out, including a what, what would you want to see in that space? Get a little more feedback on that front, and so. I think we should aim for probably a rollout in. End of March Aprilish, that's probably gonna be the key time is we're trying to put all the public pieces together in town meeting.
We should. Be cautious on like asking about programming and phrase it in such a way that. It's not the expectation of citizens that the town will. Sponsor the programming, but that it's open to local groups, local theater, local. Wha- whatever, because pretty soon you'd be organizing fashion shows for. Yeah, do you do, do you know what I'm saying? It's just like. Well, no, but but barely. Yeah, no, but you know what I'm saying? And yes, people say, oh, my gosh, the town is gonna do all this stuff in in. Forty one Highland in the historic section. So that question has to be carefully.
Yeah, what sort of organizations would you like us to partner with to see if there's a potential for them bringing programming into the facility or something like that? Okay, so. We just covered a lot. Um, my suggestion is, because we had some pretty in-depth updates on one thirty five King Street, the stabilization fund and rec party, we saw that unless there's some.
Well, if you wanted to show quickly your other flyers, Kevin. Yeah, because I think one of the things we want to do is we want to roll out other communication tools as well.
Yes.
Kevin has pulled together.
Yeah, I say this is one for like cohesive, right?
Quick, uh, recreation, um, you know, something like this.
Same idea. Um, yeah, there is, um, Michelle shared with many that which activity does.
Yep.
Is coming to do a couple for milk and tennis courts, Sawyer Street and Long Beach Playground. Um, I think this is another thing. It's great to promote, uh, get people's ideas on it. Uh, another one, public safety building over at King Street. Um, these kind of cutouts that you saw in a lot of fun, too. They were from the start of the video. I figured I may as well just utilize them if they're there. They're already created, so. Um, but same thing, uh, what would be going on with the potential moves, what would be happening? All that. The last one I had was for capital projects. Um, same thing, QR code for landing page for anything that was going on. Yeah.
The dog park's a big project.
Yeah, same big project. I'm I'm a big dog guy.
Roads, roads and sidewalks in there.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Because, you know, we've been having the need, but you know, it's so main, you know, so. To up for rest of it is to what's going on.
Yeah, this, that was just something for me, just.
No, that'd be fantastic. I wasn't in it.
No, 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 I appreciate it. But yeah, there's, uh. Pretty much all those.
So the goals for Kevin to start rolling these things out will bring it back and kind of pushes out regularly. And we can road things, things, recreation, and we grow so we probably.
Recreation projects that are gonna start accelerating pretty quickly over the next three weeks. So just so everyone is aware of that, if they see flags or they see markings, um, we're not ripping anything up yet. Um, we're just preparing for the future improvements to start between mid-June and July first.
Thank you for that helpful, helpful public warning. Again, the flags don't mean ripping out, means planning for June first.
And we also don't mean, I, a lot of people think it's fertilizer pesticides, but that it's not, it's surveying, flags, things like that.
This is a beachwood in the looking. All right, um, so let's move to the next agenda item, ATM draft warrant. Uh, the one thing actually I wanted to say is that on the stabilization funds, um, I have been talking with the school committee. And I need to circle back with advisory on capital on a kind of April second or April third. Joint meeting with all four boards and committees on the stabilization funds, including the rate setting hearing for us. So mark your calendars and note if you have any conflicts with that date.
So, yeah, this is what we got to my opinion. So, um, on the warrant, we all we are is, uh, there's been a. The uh, the generals have actually stepped out, have circulated a draft warrant article petition that would fund, um. Or a roof, um, fire, extinguish fire suppression and the new path in the front for a tent.
What are they proposed funded out of?
Uh, they have not proposed this location last time I checked, but they, I, they just come in, they didn't present anything, but they did it with councils. So, basically, you know, they're on here, made the one day right here. I think the board backed on the direction. So that's, it was somebody else I have a question on the track, why, and it's all just. So then I'll do this, so, um. So, um, Jason, very helpful, put this together on a little table, so. You can see what we were tonight, and such things are up on the next couple of weeks. So again, if we're gonna push the twelve, we'll we'll have to move those things to the future news, so they can know that. We have a plan to give you an opiate abatement fund update from St. Harbor. Uh, the three beach minimums coming into its application, that is not gonna be on the twelve. Uh, the clerk will like play that all cylinders, protocols and regulations. We have to get to the CHI's, I don't know if that'll be ready by the twelfth or not, um, and just the ongoing rules. We have planned the audit for the nineteenth, that's Jim Powers, our, our new partner, and that is ready to commit to the audit from next year. Um, there's an application for a moment, but this is the first time someone's actually actually accessed the memorial bench policy. For several years ago, they want to, want to try to put a bench, um.
About second call today.
That will, it's been very popular, but more or less, the board has to approve it, that's how it works. Um, season license will be up on on the nineteenth, if you need your everyday proclamations, if you keep our everyday certifications. That will do our particles. So, um, some of this stuff's gonna be pushing further down, obviously, and we're gonna lock in what articles we're gonna be looking at over the next few meetings. And that is a poll hearing scheduled for the second. So this is just the beginning, look at this, you'll get a fresh version. So I think we need to schedule right through the end of ten meetings, so we know what we are. Uh, again, Gina, we're gonna add then that joint meeting for the second or third, I guess you'll hold that.
You want to have stabilization funds to that?
So my only question is the twelfth, um, we gotta push that to the nineteenth, or you're gonna do virtual meeting for some.
I don't think the CHI usually will be ready. Um, so that leaves the safe harbor update. Free beach minimum application should go past.
It's starting to be virtual.
Yes. We're, we're gonna meet virtually on the eleventh.
Oh, George.
Monday. Yeah, Monday, the eleventh.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave it.
Tuesday, the twelfth as well?
No, just Monday, the eleventh.
So that makes it, we're to a virtual meeting.
Yeah, so, so Chris, I can talk with you if there's like some very quick things. We can maybe sneak in just to keep things moving on, but I think otherwise, virtually.
Thought we could push it to the, that's fine.
The eleven, yeah.
Virtual.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, so we're gonna change, so. We have to move the select board hearing because of scheduling on our end, my end. Councils. Mine goes, um, to March eleventh, not twelfth. And we're gonna do it virtually because Ellen and I are gonna be out of state, so we've got to do.
You might actually have an, we'll have an update on what happens.
Yeah. All right, um.
And then the only other thing I want you to know is that, um, nine hundred and twenty seven people have voted already in advance for the primary. Uh, about a hundred and sixty of them in person, the rest by. And the election is tomorrow, so anyone who was not voted in the primaries tomorrow, seven AM, eight PM, it's Wilka Commons, it's not a town hall, so. Don't go to Wilka, don't go to town hall, you have to go to Wilka. That's my.
Do we have a sign on the door of town hall that's?
There's a big sign out in front of town hall. It says.
Right, select board. Right, select board comments. Chris Flex, anything?
Nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grady? Ms. Mark? All right, okay, same here, um, approval of minutes, February twenty seventh. You know.
So I have a, I just have a couple of edits. So when Chair Dipple called the meeting to order. Chris Flex is present. If you call to order. I'm sorry, I didn't get it to you.
Oh, no, no, that's not, oh, it's okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and then. On the second page. Under, um. Draft FY twenty five draft capital plan, line three, it's ARCA and advisory funds, it's a hundred ninety six thousand. Or these are, yeah, thank you. And then in the next section, I'd like to add halfway down. Where we were talking about the fire prevention was a temporary fix to give them more time to move out. I want it noted that I read the last paragraph of John Allen's letter of January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four. That did not specify a timeline. So do you want to move subject to those additions? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye. Unanimous ayes. All right, um, would any, there's no topics, not reasonably anticipated, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion, second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.